I'm choosing to support Charles Mon, because I know that he puts children and family first. That he cares about the future of our community. I know that he thinks that way. He's looking forward 20, 40 years. He knows that Corvallis needs to be a place where everybody fits, where everyone has a place to live. Where everybody has a place they can afford to live.
I'm so grateful to know Charles, and I very much support his run for city council. I'm excited to see him cooperatively working with our school board, as well as all the other city and county organizations in the next coming years.
He was on so many groups, and usually that was as a leader. He'd step forward and say, "I can do it," and he sure can.
There are a lot of communities and a lot of different people who we have to interact with and the like. And this homeless shelter, whatever word you want to use to describe it, has been an example of where we have not come together to talk about how to make things work. We have gotten into, on the part of some, into intimidation kind of politics, which is not my kind of politics. I've not seen that out of Charles, and this is where I support him in terms of working with the groups that are involved. Let's talk about how we're going to make it happen, how we're going to deal with all of the individuals.
As a city councillor, I'm not up there to get my way. I'm not up there to push my agenda forward. I'm out there to support you. The things that I find important, you know, they matter, but as one voter. What's really important is everybody else's idea for what Ward Two needs. You know, I want to hear from you. I want to know, what's your big issue? What issues are you facing with your housing situation, or your, you know, your parking situation, or the air quality, or anything? Anything that's your view of the future that you're worried about trying to live here in Corvallis?
All right, give it up for Charles Mon, the next councillor for Ward Two.
Well, hi, everybody, and welcome to We the People. That was my bungled intro for Charles, but that was a beautiful campaign video by Ashley Terry. We all know Ashley. He's also kind of my boss, so, great video, Ashley. Really like that. No, it was a fantastic video. Thank you for being here, Barbara and Oz, and Laura Live and Good we have here, who's going to be with us in a moment. I'm just gonna be right honest upfront, Charles is my friend, and he's the one who got me involved with Democrats here on the ground. And I thank him for that, and he's kept me, he's kept me going in a lot of ways. And so I thank Charles for all that he does and continually does for democracy. And so you're gonna hear a bias out of me, because I personally endorse Charles Mon for Ward Two in Corvallis, even though I don't think I vote for him, because I'm not in Ward Two. But it doesn't matter, I'm endorsing him. So, anyway, please welcome Charles Mon to We the People. Hi, Charles, thanks for joining us.
Thanks, John. I appreciate being here.
Yeah, well, thank you for having me. There's no way that I can do this like totally pro and proper, because we're friends, so we're just gonna, just gonna be casual about it, all right?
That's all right.
Good, good. Before we ask you any questions about why you decided to run, we're gonna bring on the lovely Laura Live and Good, who is back.
I'm back.
Thank you, Laura. Laura, you are gonna be answering questions from the audience. Tell everybody how they can engage.
Well, this is an engagement broadcast, so if you have a question for Charles during the interview, please feel free to pop it in chat. Type forward "question" all in caps, or tag me, so I can see it and find it when it's time to answer questions, which we'll do a couple times during the show.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Laura.
You're welcome.
Charles, finally got you on We the People.
It's been a while.
I know, I know, and you were just on, you're doing the circuit. You were just on with Larry on the Progressive Oregon Show, right?
Yes, it was.
The big indie circuit here in Oregon. We all need you to share that stuff. Hi, Holly, I see you in the chat. Good to have you here, Oz. So, why, you and I have known each other a while. You were watching Bernie 2016 TV and kind of reached out to me when we moved down here. And I know you're already involved in democracy. You're, I believe you're one of the vice chairs, second vice chair in the Benton County Democrats, correct?
That's correct. I'm second vice chair.
Okay, so I know there's a lot of work that goes in there. What, why in the world did you decide to run for Corvallis City Council Ward Two? Why? That's crazy.
Well, my original time I decided to do that was actually in 2016 after I got back from Philly.
Oh.
You know, I was on the way back, and, you know, Bernie says, you know, "Get involved in your, you know, in politics." He says, "You gotta get involved. You've gotta run for office." So I did in 2016, and I didn't win. I think I missed about like 250 votes.
Oh, wow.
And so the goal still hasn't changed. I still see the same problems in Ward Two that I did in 2016. And, you know, I was asked, "Are you gonna run again?" And I said back in 2016, "I'm, you know, I'm not gonna walk away from this. I'm not gonna allow one small defeat stop me from helping my community."
That's awesome. That's awesome. And so, when did you announce? How long have you been going on this?
Ooh, that's a good one. Um, well, I think June?
Okay.
It was in June when I made it official and filed my paperwork and started collecting signatures. I did it the first day you were allowed to file. I was there.
Awesome, awesome. Hey, Justin Bryce. Justin joined us in the chat there. And Cassandra Nix, how you doing? Charles is your friend too? They're, we've got a lot of friends of Charles here in the audience. Good to see everybody. So, all right, so you decided to run in June. Is there anybody else? We did some research. We couldn't find anybody running. We thought Catherine Mader was gonna run. You're saying she has filed papers. You do have a challenge.
Okay, yeah, so at first I went a long time thinking, "Oh, well, I don't have an opponent," because my opponent I had in 2016 is now running for mayor. So I was thinking, "I'm unopposed. This isn't gonna be that hard. I still want to talk to all the, you know, all the voters, because they're the ones who should be making the decisions, not me." And then there was an issue around the downtown Second Street homeless shelter that she fought, you know, she was very vocal against. And because of the decision the city made, she decided, "Well, we need better representation, and I'm gonna run for city council." Turns out she was a city councillor back in the 70s, and she did file. She filed and collected the number of signatures required to be on the ballot. So she, I don't know if she's turned in a voter's pamphlet statement. This morning was the deadline. According to Secretary of State's website, she hasn't raised any money or filed a campaign committee, but she's still gonna be on the ballot.
That's interesting. So she got the initial papers in on time, which was, the deadline was back in August on a Friday. And then for us, we couldn't find anything else in the paper saying that she's running, and the latest article we were reading says that you have nobody running against you. So, she's gonna be on the ballot, but nobody will know who she is, I guess.
Well, maybe she's just thinking that, you know, that people know her name, and that's enough. But I'm not, I'm not taking any chances of that. I'm not gonna do a weak campaign. I have a campaign committee, and I'm doing everything the right way, and I'm out knocking doors. And I have people knocking doors for me, and we want to reach out to all the voters, because, like I said, they're the ones who should make the decisions.
And that's, yeah, I've got some pictures here. I've got this, I think we know some of the people in this picture. It's you guys out somewhere in Corvallis in the city. So...
Actually, I believe that was Portland.
Was that Portland? Were you up in Portland?
I think that was one of the rallies in Portland.
Nice, nice.
Justin probably remember which one that was.
I see you posting about it all the time, and that's another, the reason I'm bringing this up is because I see that you're actually running a campaign. You're out there, you're doing, you know, you're posting on Facebook, social media, see that you're going places, you're canvassing. We were talking in the green room about mailers and materials that you have to have made. You're really going after this on quite a scale for, what is a ward? How big is a ward? Tell us.
Well, in Corvallis, there are nine wards, and what a ward is, is it's broken up by number, you know, the population, number of people in an area. So Ward Two, I'm not sure the full population, but there's 2,886 voters, I believe. And it covers all of the downtown area. It covers many historic homes. It covers affordable housing and low-income homes and older homes that, you know, aren't historic but have been around for a long time in South Corvallis. And the previous city councillor, the only thing I ever heard from him is he talked about the downtown area and his historic neighborhood where he lived. And Ward Two is much more diverse than that. We have a lot of issues that face, you know, vary depending on who you're talking to. You know, some people are just concerned about their rent, their increased rent. People are concerned about lack of jobs. Other people are concerned about their property tax. Other people are concerned about transportation issues and traffic issues and parking issues. I mean, there are a lot of different issues depending on who you ask.
Well, yeah, and you kind of talked about that, spoke to that in your video there, where you're saying, "What are your particular problems?" You're not dealing with a large number of people, but they're all gonna have diverse issues. Tell everybody what you do for a living, because it's kind of related to dealing with one of the core issues, right?
It's very related. I'm a property manager for an affordable housing complex. I actually took on a couple of other properties. And all my properties are designated for seniors and persons with disabilities. So these are very, very low-income people who, if it wasn't for these projects, would be homeless themselves. And, you know, they're just, they're just like everybody else, just trying to survive and get by and have some sort of enjoyment out of life.
So part of what you see and deal with every day are people that are struggling to just pay their bills, struggling to get by. They've got other expenses, or they're dealing with medical issues, right?
Yeah, and the average person that I interact with usually survives off of about $1,000 a month.
Wow.
You know, that's very low-income, and then, these are people that have worked, you know, a good portion of their lives and end up having some sort of accident or issue where they became disabled, and now they're living off social security. And some people like to treat them like they're just lazy. You know, they're not lazy. They've had careers. They've had educations. They've had families. You know, it's just, it doesn't, one of them always tells me, and he's a great guy, he always tells me, "We're all one incident away from disaster in life." You know, one illness, one accident, and we're all in that same boat.
Yeah, and I think we're, I think we all see that more and more. Certainly, I'm personally in that boat, right? I don't have a big chunk of change pushed away. I don't know a lot of people that do that. Everybody's just kind of getting by these days, or not getting by.
Same here. If I lost my job today, I don't have enough money to move. I don't have enough money to sustain myself long-term. I have some money in savings, but I definitely wouldn't say I'm well off.
Right, right, and everybody's, like I said, everybody's just one step away. So on that note, what's going on with the homeless shelter? Because this seems to, tell the story of this homeless shelter here.
So there's an organization called HOAC. I can't, for some reason, at this moment, can't remember what that stands for. Housing something alliance. Anyways, they had a job to do, which was find a location for the men's cold weather shelter.
All right.
You know, it opened this up every year from November through, I think, February, March. Because as if anybody lives in Oregon knows, it can get cold here. It can get very cold here.
Yeah.
It can snow here sometimes, and we want to save lives, right? That's the goal, saving people's lives. So they found, they worked, this guy, oh man, I can't remember his name. Anyways, they found a location, and it was perfect. It was downtown Corvallis on Second Street, and that's already where many people who are without a house, you'll find them. That's where they live, because there's a restroom there, and then the services they need are in that area. So they brought together three different services. They were gonna bring in the daytime drop-in center, which is where you can go during the day. You know, get some coffee in the morning, get a snack, you know, get some basic necessities throughout the day. Stone Soup, which provides meals for families and many others.
Right.
And then the men's cold weather shelter. So all these three services were gonna be in one location. It was a fantastic idea, I thought, and many others thought too. And where it is, is literally right behind one of the buildings owned by my opponent, Catherine Mader. She didn't want it there. Many of her friends and other business owners did not want it downtown. I've heard just ridiculous stories that are attacking, you know, verbally attacking our homeless community that I don't think are true. I say good morning to people all the time. I ride my bike down the riverfront where many of them are spending their morning, and I've never had an issue. And granted, I'm a man, and I'm larger, so that does play into it, but they're polite. I haven't even had them be rude to me, so...
So what you're speaking to, let's just clarify here, you're speaking to Catherine Mader, and some of her friends are saying that these homeless individuals or people that are down and out are accosting women or causing problems, and therefore they didn't want this shelter, which I didn't even understand, is a temporary thing. It's just open for...
The cold weather part of it is a temporary shelter. That's it, you know, but they were gonna, but it was gonna be a permanent location for that temporary shelter. Possibly even be open longer than just those few months, but it's still just a nighttime shelter. So my thought of it, when I heard these people talk about how dangerous these group of men are.
Right.
This is just for men, you know, and that they're dangerous, and they're drug addicts and alcoholics and out of control, which, you know, I volunteered there last winter. And did some of them come in intoxicated? Yeah, you know, if I lived on the street, I don't know what I would do either. So I'm not even gonna try to speak poorly about that. And, but they would come in, and they were happy to have a warm bed and a warm meal and a safe place to sleep.
Right.
And I think we all want that, right? So when I heard them talk about how dangerous these group of men are, and how we can't have them in our neighborhood, because it's gonna make the neighborhood dangerous at night. I'm like, "Well, it's a shelter that you have to go into at night, and you're not allowed to leave until the morning. If you do, you can't come back in." So even with their argument, saying that these people are dangerous, doesn't that make it safer at night if they're inside a shelter?
Right. Makes sense to me. That's pretty good logic there.
Right, that's, when I heard the arguments, I was like, "Wait a minute, that doesn't make any sense."
It's not about safety, and you and I both know that, right?
Right, it's not, it's not, you know, and so unfortunately, since then, Catherine Mader threatened a lawsuit to the city. I don't even know if she's dropped that yet, but they, she had a meeting, several business owners had a meeting with HOAC and the city and some others involved, and ended up moving the cold weather shelter to where it was this past, the previous winter, which is Hanson Tire Factory in South Corvallis. And not that that's necessarily a terrible location, but, you know, their big thing that they fought about downtown was, "Well, you didn't even ask the neighborhood. You didn't consult anybody." But they were okay with moving it to the Hanson Tire Factory without talking to anybody in that area. So it's like, uh...
Because, because it's not their area. It's very simple.
Right, it's not their neighborhood. It's not in their backyard. And the part that really upsets me about that is like, it's great, the cold weather shelter's still gonna have a place. These people are still gonna be kept warm and safe, and that's good.
Right.
But this was gonna bring three services together. Those other two services, Stone Soup and the Daytime Drop-In Center, became homeless because of this, because they could not move into that building without all three services.
So it really doesn't benefit, and all it really does is provide some better optics in, as far as Catherine Mader's concerned, for her building, is what's going on here.
Right, now, you know, and I'm not trying to talk bad about Catherine Mader when it comes to whatever kind of campaign she's running or who she really is as a person, but this particular decision, I feel, was not representative of the people that I know. It doesn't represent my views. It doesn't represent my desires for Corvallis. And we actually ended up having a letter that we had out every Saturday. We had nearly 200 signatures on that letter showing support for that downtown location. So the community, I feel, at large, wanted that shelter.
Yeah, you're running for office. I'm not, so I can just say it. What she's doing there is just shitty. It's just shitty. It's not nice, and I don't know, I don't understand what the deal is there, and, you know, it's unfortunate that she's pushing it through. It seems like it's not stopped, so what, not only did she threaten lawsuit, and then she's supposedly running, maybe, maybe, it could be on the ballot, and running for what agenda? Just to make sure she gets to have her way with the homeless shelter? I mean, we really don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know at this point. I've heard very little from her since the time of filing.
Right.
You know, out canvassing and talking to people, and nobody's heard from her that I've talked to.
So what is this, I'm looking through, we're researching yesterday before the show, and then I come across this article, and it says, "County hires facilitator to clear the air on the homeless plan." What the hell are they doing now?
So the county, so this isn't city level, this is more county, but the county has hired a mediator, I guess, to bring all the parties together. But it's not all the parties, because, well, I personally haven't been invited, so I'm a community member. And I'm sure many other community members have not been invited. And so they hired a moderator to bring the business owners together, members of HOAC, and, you know, who run the shelter, people who run the shelter together. So I guess try to communicate and try to find a common ground. And that sounds great, except for when you hear that the county spent, I believe it was something like $22,000 to hire this person. $22,000. I mean, we could build a long-term shelter for, you know, with some of that money. That money could go towards feeding people or providing, you know, better services to the community.
Yeah.
It just seems like that's not, I think there should be better things we can spend our money on than that.
Yeah, I agree, and so I made this just for Catherine. You've already cost Corvallis, well, the county, $22,000 so that your business doesn't have to, you know, whatever. Shitty.
Yeah, meanwhile, I'd like to throw out some numbers. So meanwhile, as of 2017 in Benton County, four out of 10 of all renters are paying more than 50% of their income for rent.
Wow.
You know, that, these are statistics that are actually cool. One of the other ones is students. So nearly one student in each classroom was homeless in 2016 and 2017. These are children.
Wow.
So we have families who don't have homes, families who don't, can't afford an apartment. There's not enough affordable apartments in Benton. This is Benton County. So the fact that the county can spend $22,000 to hire a single group to do something that we can't, we can't house our children.
And we're doing this to put, and it's really, it's even worse, because you're spending money to resolve an issue that's for a homeless shelter, which is really not even dealing with the issue of homelessness. It's just dealing with the symptom, you know?
Right, this is a Band-Aid. This isn't even a solution at all.
Yeah.
You know, we need to start thinking big. So, I mean, in my voter's pamphlet statement, I talk about how, although I completely support the idea of a cold, men's cold weather shelter, because it's about saving lives.
Sure, we need it. It's necessary.
But we need long-term solutions.
And what are them?
Solve this. Well, I mean, we need more affordable housing, just to start with. They're, you know, where's that other number?
Are you looking up your stats? You got your numbers right there.
You know, so for every 100 families with extremely low income, there are only 16 affordable units available.
Yeah.
So why aren't we building more? You know, why isn't everything, every organization, every person coming together and say, "We can fix this." You know, but we're only gonna fix it by working together. We're not gonna fix it by pointing fingers, blaming somebody else, and not communicating with the community. We need to all come together. We need to all sit down at the table and come up with a solution.
Agreed. Well said, well said. We'll take a moment here and just find out, is there any questions? Laura Live and Good, have you had any questions in the audience here?
We do not.
All right, then.
Everybody's just, Holly actually is nice. She's answering some questions in chat, too.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see Eugene just posted, "Corvallis could use another smart, hard-working, compassionate leader like Charles." It's very nice.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Well said, Eugene.
Yeah, all right, so what else is going on in Corvallis? Are there any particular issues that you want to speak to that are close to you in Ward Two?
Well, specifically, part of Ward Two, between Ward Two and Ward Three, we're right, it's divided by Highway 99, south. It's a dangerous road. We have log trucks and people speeding down the highway all the time. I'm actually, it's right outside. And there, you know, the speed limit is supposed to be 35 miles an hour. And when you get closer to downtown, it slows down to 25.
Right.
Nobody does that speed.
No, I don't.
35 itself is too fast. Back in, it was June 27th, a man died. A bicyclist who was crossing the street was hit and killed. You know, and he was young. He was in his 20s, I believe. And, you know, there's been talk and work about multi-use paths from South Corvallis into town. And one of the paths already kind of exists. People just use it anyways, but they wanted to have it developed. And they started this plan 15 years ago.
Holy crap.
15 years ago, and it is not done.
Wow.
And we need to stop having things get held up by just red tape, and that's what's holding it up, you know, environmental studies. And it's like, I love, I care about the environment. I'm passionate about it. You know that, John. But we also need to take steps to create things to better people's lives. And having safe paths for people in South Corvallis to get into downtown, it's critical.
I agree, because I know the stretch of road you're talking about, and the minute you said 35 is too fast, I'm like, "Yeah, but if you're in a car and you want to go that direction, 35 is too slow on that road, so there needs to be something going on," because...
Except for it's actually not.
Well, but as a motorist, what I'm saying is a motorist that travels that way, because as you keep going, it turns into a major highway and it becomes less populated and more rural. So the problem is that...
...out towards the airport.
They need a better way to route motorists, or they need something safer for, you know, that's the overpass. They had the, 15 years? That's crazy.
For a multi-purpose path. And now there's another talk about buying up a section of the unused railway that goes down to South Corvallis, and it's about converting that into a multi-pat. And they're great ideas, but we need to move forward. We need to actually start building this and developing it and getting the community involved. And somebody I was talking to yesterday when I was out canvassing talked about, if we started getting the community involved in some of the local projects, you know, adopting parks even, something as simple as that, we would have better parks.
Right.
Same thing, have more of the community involved in how we can better our neighborhoods and safety, and we can solve it. We can do it all.
Nice. So your intention is to push for more progressive changes, or just find out what's holding, you know, what's killing this stuff in the city council and push it forward?
Well, and the real way to push it forward isn't by me pushing it forward. It's by letting everybody in Ward Two know, "Hey, these are the issues that's holding up. This is what's happening," and getting everybody together to stand up and say, "We want this. Let's do it."
So you're claiming you're gonna, should you win the race, you would continue to speak with your constituents?
Oh, absolutely. I plan on having monthly meetings in different parts of Ward Two. Because there isn't just one neighborhood in Ward Two. There are multiple grids. So I plan on having a meeting every month, pick a location, and meet the people in that neighborhood. You know, small community events. I'm actually doing it with my campaign. I have a community event tomorrow. It's a very small park called Little Field Park Downtown, and I'm gonna have to do just cookies and lemonade. It doesn't cost anything, you know, that's cheap. But I'm gonna bring the community together, and that's my goal, is to really get the community engaged in their local government.
I think that's fantastic, because every time I've seen that happen, a candidate do that, Bernie Sanders is a great example. But, you know, and you're running a very Bernie campaign, from what I can see. And every time I see that happen, it makes positive change in a community, because you're out there talking to people, and so I appreciate you.
Many people I talk to don't even know who their city councillors are. They're like, they haven't idea who Rowan Hoag was.
I don't know who mine is.
Councillor for six years. You should know that.
Well, he should have taken the time to get to know them, which is what you're gonna do. I appreciate that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I appreciate that. That's awesome. You want to, let's round it off on a half hour. Closing statements before we talk about Songs Out, why should people vote for Charles Mon for Corvallis Ward Two?
Well, I'm, because I'm here to represent you. You know, if you're watching and you live in Ward Two, I'm gonna represent you. I'm gonna represent the issues that matter to you. I will be your voice on that city council. I will take phone calls from you. I will respond to emails, and I will meet you in your neighborhood. I'm not gonna expect you to come to me. You know, that's the other thing, is you, you know, I know, you know, other politicians will hold forums and town halls. I'm gonna come to your neighborhood and sit down with you. I don't want to just have you speak from a bleacher or in front of me at a city council meeting. I want to hear from you in your neighborhood.
That's awesome. What I like about it is you really could get to know every single person in Ward Two.
Sure, absolutely. I'm getting to know a lot of them already, and I have over the last two years.
That's really...
You know, when I ran in 2016, I knew almost, I didn't know anybody. It was really hard. It was a challenge for me to even get the signatures to be on the ballot then.
Wow.
And now it was easy. I mean, it was, it was like, you know, people were like, "Oh, yes, you're running. I'll sign it," and then it was done.
So running before, even though you didn't win, was very helpful in running the second time, you would say?
I learned a lot, and since then, so, I mean, a little more background that we didn't cover.
Sure.
So, you know, in 2016 primary, I ran a writing campaign to become a precinct committee person, which you've talked a lot about on your different shows, what that is.
Yeah.
And then I continued to get involved with the county party. And then after running my election in 2016 and I didn't win, I became a member of the Community Relations Advisor Group of the city. And that works with issues between Oregon State University and impacted us on community members. And I've tried to be a voice there for my community. I've also got involved at the state level. I've, you know, I've really just kind of dove in, and this has become, I hate to say it, because it sounds almost kind of cheesy. This is like my hobby. People ask, "Well, how do you make time to do this?" You know, I work a full-time job. I'm a father and a grandfather. And it's, sometimes it's hard to balance, but it's because how many hours a day does the average person sit around just watching TV? You know, I don't do as much of that as I used to.
Well, and you said it was a hobby, right?
Right, this is now my hobby. So I go to meetings, and I speak up, and I, and I, I'm on shows.
Right, well, I mean, and it's democracy, and it's, I think, a good citizen makes a hobby of democracy, and it's, you know, your passion for the hobby that drives it, right?
Right, and if I could say something to anybody to try to help motivate them is, it's not as scary as it sounds, you know? You get terrified that first time. You have to get up in front of a room of between 20 and 100 people, depending on what your county's like. And I remember I was scared. I was scared if you could speak publicly, and I still get scared to speak publicly, but it gets a little easier. And you realize that everybody that's in one of those rooms, and so if, whether you're a Democrat or some other party, if you go to get involved in your local party, these are... If you go to get involved in your local party, these are people that generally have your values. You share values, you share ideas, and you'll get to know them, and you'll realize they're there to support you. You know, if you're wanting to help, they're gonna be happy that you're there to help.
Oh, yeah, because they're not the ones running. So like, you're willing to do that? What can I do? Money?
Exactly how it goes. And then you realize, oh, and now I'm being asked to do this, and I'm asked to do that. And and you just, the the hardest thing to do for me, because I want to help everybody, I want to do everything, you can't do everything, so.
Right.
You've you've gotta draw, you gotta create your boundaries and draw your lines. And and my friends like Justin and my wife Holly and Catherine Sterns have all been like, say no once in a while. You've gotta say no. And I and I have, and I have, I've gotten better at that.
Good. Well, I, you won't say no when you're told you've won and you're the councillor of Ward Two.
Happily accept that.
Okay, good. Well, thank.
Um, if I could take a moment, moment, um, there's a few things I would like to mention. Kind of on a side note, uh, first of all, today is World Suicide Prevention Day. And uh, one thing my wife pointed out to me, and I give her credit for it, is, you know, people are always like saying that, you know, you need to reach out. If you're experiencing these thoughts or feelings and talk to somebody. It's not that person's job to reach out to us and talk to us. We need to be more accountable to our friends and our neighbors, and we need to reach out to people. If we know somebody experiences depression. Reach out to that person, check them out, see if they're okay, see if there's anything you can do to help them out. And if you haven't heard from somebody in a while, definitely reach out, get ahold of them.
Very nice.
And on on that note, also, I'd like to thank a few people. So this campaign, running a campaign as as aggressively as I'm trying to run a campaign, is not easy. I didn't, wasn't very aggressive in twenty sixteen, I learned a lot, um, I had some help. But this time around, I have an entire group of people that are supporting me, and I wanna say thank you to all of them. Uh, it's not, I can't thank all of them, of course, I'd take forever, but um, my campaign manager, uh, Ron Givens. People might know that name from uh, Facebook. He posts a lot. Uh, my treasurer and my wife, Holly Chatey, who's in the chat right now. Uh, my events coordinator, Catherine Sterns, Catherine, if you're watching, I hope you heal up fast. Uh, Catherine managed her self-out canvassing for me, so she had a fall, and I hope she's healing up quickly. My, one of my graphic designers, Aaron Fox, uh, my uh, platform editor, uh, Cassie Nix. Um, my photographers, Michael Helberg and Ron Boker. Um, as you mentioned earlier, Ashley Terry for shooting fantastic video work. Everybody, check out his fit, his YouTube channel, there's some great work on there. Um, my social media volunteer coordinators, Heather Bishop and Justin Bryce. Um, and artist Brian Heath, who uh, did uh, sketched up my little logo that's at the end of that video. Brian did that, he did, he was responsible for Barnes for Obama, did a lot of Bernie, uh, Bernie Sanders during the campaign, fantastic guy. And there are many other people, and I thank them all for their time and support, because I couldn't do this without you guys.
And you're gonna have to say all that again when you win, because.
Oh, how long ago was that? And also to anybody who's donated my campaign, thank you. Um, I'd like to also put that out there. Uh, campaigns are about talking to people, but you've gotta have something in your hand to do that talking, and it costs money. So if anybody's willing to donate to my campaign, I greatly appreciate it, even if it's just ten dollars. You can go to electmon.com and there's a donate button on there, you just click and donate, it's real simple.
Well, there you go. I was just about to say, tell everybody where they can go, but there's the slide. We got it all ready for you. Go help Charles out if you're if you're uh, able to help him physically by canvassing or working with him. And that'd be great. Otherwise, give him some money or help him in social media. I'll need to do that, right? Charles, thank you so much for coming on, I really appreciate it. And thank you for running again in Ward Two, looks like you got this.
Yes, well, thank you for having me, and I and I really appreciate everything Uphill Media's been doing. Um, yeah, I've run into people that I've told about your channel who are like, wow, I learned what, you know, how the DPO is working. Or I I learned about, you know, Robert's rules.
Yes, incredibly boring yet powerful stuff.
Where else?
But you know what's not boring is when you understand enough of it, and then you're in a meeting where something's not going right. Or, you know, they're not representing what you wanna say, is having those tools to stand up.
Yep.
You know, point of clarification or, you know.
It's powerful.
I make, I have a motion to uh, suspend the rules to get something done that needs to be done right then and there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Charles, I appreciate that. And.
Thank you.
Laura Live and Good, I appreciate you. Thank you so much for being here.
You're quite welcome.
Engaging in chat. Nobody had any questions, apparently, or Holly took care of them all, so thank you, Holly. I, well, I'm gonna get us out of here with the song which which uh, Marcus chose for you. Uh, Marcus is also a friend and knows Charles. And uh, the the reason is Charles picked a couple of good songs, but uh, we have a lot of problems with censorship these days. And uh, it's really hard to get some of the 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 more popular, better songs through. Even stuff that I used to be able to play, unfortunately, is now getting shut down. And I'm not joking when I say they are targeting songs that are about rebellion, about uh, uh, about revolution. They they really are shutting those songs down. It's not a joke, and I know it sounds like a conspiracy theory, but it's it's not. Um, so anyway, Marcus uh, did some work, and I thought he came across an excellent, excellent song. And and it was what I started the We The People with, because I had the wrong video pulled up. It was Bruce Springsteen. We may still get shut down for the video content, though, because that's just the way YouTube is these days. But um, uh, this is, this is for Charles, because it, Charles really understands and. Uh, uh, is working with people that are dealing with homelessness or low-income disabilities. The people that we need to be taking care of the most, that our country currently cares about the least, right? And and we need to elect people like Charles to fix that, to change that, right? And so this is the ghost of Tom Joad with Bruce Springsteen and Tom Morello live. It's really long, because both Bruce and Tom get into it with dueling guitars, and that part alone is worth watching. And hopefully they won't shut us down because it's live video. But this song is about the depression, and it was uh, originally, it's based off the Ballad of Tom Joad. Which is a poem by uh, it said Arlo Guthrie. So we've got some history here. And uh, thank you all for being here. And we don't have another We The People lined up yet, not yet. But uh, you can join us for the Saturday show, and we'll let you know what's going on. Larry's in France, so there's that. The ghost of Tom Joad, everybody. Charles, help him out if you can.
Thank you, everybody.
Through Pete Seeger, through Woody Guthrie, through Lead Belly, through the fathers of folk music. And people who were engaged in and who wrote about what was going on in the world around them. All of us here tonight are fortunate to be in this room. If you pick up the newspapers, you see millions of people out of work, you see a blood fight over decent healthcare. For our citizens, and you see people struggling to hold on to their homes. If Woody Guthrie were alive today, he'd have a lot to write about, high times on Wall Street and hard times on Main Street. Now to join my two great guitar players, Steve Van Zant and Ilse Lofton. I wanna bring out one of the greatest guitar players in rock and roll and a great voice from Rage Against the Machine. And the Night Watchman, Tom Morello. Been walking along the railroad tracks. Gone someplace, there's no going back. Highway patrol choppers coming up over the ridge. Hot soup on a campfire under the bridge. Shelter line stretching around the corner. Welcome to the new world order. Family sleeping in their cars in the southwest. No home, no job, no peace, no risk. Well, the highway is alive tonight. But nobody's kidding, nobody about where it goes. I'm sitting down here in the campfire light. Searching for the ghost of Tom Joad. He pulls a prayer book out of his sleeping bag. Preach a lights up for fun and takes a trip. Wait, throwing the last shall be first and the first shall be last. In a cardboard box need the underpants. You got a one-way ticket to the promised land. You got a hole in your belly and a gun in your hand. Sleeping on a pillow of solid rock. Bathing in the city's aqua jungle. Well, the highway is alive tonight. Where it's headed, everybody knows. I'm sitting down here in the campfire light. Waiting on the ghost of Tom Joad.